The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortmann, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rowdy, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vicaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohen, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, President Reed, Alderman Tyus, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Howard, Alderman Rowdy, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Cruzen, 21 present.
A quorum being present, I'll ask everyone in the chambers and galleries who's able to stand to please rise for prayer. Give an all honor to God, Almighty God, Source of all authority, we humbly ask God's in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions, amen. Introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the 23rd.
Yes, I'd like to have Harry Kennedy as my guest today and I see hail from the firefighters and that is my special guest and I'll get the rest written down in a minute.
All right, thank you all. Alderman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the Board. First of all, I want to welcome the ambassadors for St. Louis Public Schools. As you know, you are near and dear to my heart and I appreciate the fact that you're taking leadership roles at such an early age. Thank you for being here. Also, as we move forward later on in here in our deliberations, we also have some very special guests who came to St. Louis last night to assist us in honoring the most comparable, to the dais, take it to the dais, the most comparable Chaka Khan. I'd like to ask you to stand as I call your name. Gabriel Holder, Sherri Hadley, Richard Gant, and Curtis Benjamin. Most of you recognize some of the faces from movie, TV screen, all of that, they're very accomplished individuals and Mr. Benjamin is operating a program called Saving Our Daughters and you know I'm very involved with working with youth. So I thank you for coming to our town, I thank you for assisting in the St. Louis Community Empowerment Foundation and their honoring of Chaka Khan last night.
Alderman from the 14th.
Good morning, President Reed and esteemed colleagues. I would like to welcome today the students from Long Middle School that is nestled in the center of the 14th ward along with them, Ms. Patrice Crowdy, the Community Collaborative Specialist from the Community School and Mr. John Wyndham from Community School, St. Louis Public Schools, good to see you. Also, Mr. Mike McMillan, License Collector, like to recognize him. Also, my committeemen, Mr. Harry Kennedy, Gary Otten from the Painters District Council, and Mr. Leroy Grant from the Communication Workers. Thank you and I'd like to welcome all of them today. Thank you.
Alderman from the 16th.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the Board. I would like to have as my special guests today, Mr. David Holmes of the Plumbers and Pipefitters and Anthony Lancia of the Associated General Contractors.
Alderman from 27.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to have as my special guest, the kids from Wallbridge Elementary that are here with the CEC successful program and also our past committeeman in the 27th Ward, Curtis Royston, who is now also over our bike program in the ward, so thank you.
Alderman from the 9th.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the Board. I'd like to have for my honored guest today, Ronnie Hour, who's staying cool in the leisure room.
Alderman from the 8th.
Good morning, Mr. President and members of the Board. This morning, I have with me the committeewoman from the 8th Ward and she's here also with the ambassadors, I also have from the Malampi Community School and with the ambassadors today, Avis May. We're kind of doing a complete takeover here this morning. This morning, we also have the chairman of the 8th Ward Independent Democrats who runs the fastest meetings if you ever come to the 8th Ward, now they're fast and that's Mr. Charles Bradburn over here.
Any further introductions, any further introductions? We'll suspend what our regular order of business to take up our Courtesy Resolution Calendar, move for adoption of Courtesy Resolution Calendar, entertain a second on that motion. Second, I'd like to Alderman from the 25th. Alderman from the 19th, would you like to approach the
Good morning, members of the Board and honored guests. I have a great honor today to present a resolution that I probably couldn't have dreamed of this opportunity nor orchestrated it on my own. So God is good, he brings us what we need, he brings us assistance and resources to do the jobs that we do. Before I present the resolution, I'd like to also recognize the honorable License Collector, Michael McMillan. Thank you for joining us. As I shared with you in announcing my guests, last night, we had an opportunity to do some recognition, but today I wanted to do some special recognition because we have here today with us Dr. Mubarak. But Dr. Mubarak is a very special young woman who has achieved a lot and this resolution will actually say to you who she is and what she has done. But above and beyond everything, we know that she represents women on the Shura Council of the Kingdom of Bahrain. She's a very accomplished doctor in the field of IT, technology, information, and just on the side, she also cares about women's issues, health and nutrition. She has made sure that she is very well educated with much information and much to give. So I am going to take a moment, and I normally don't, but I am going to read this resolution because I want you to know and understand who we have before us and who has said to us, "I am willing to partner with you and let's work on the issues in dealing with women and the disparities that we have and also having another level of information and how we share information and make sure most especially our young people understand the importance of communication." So whereas we have been apprised that Dr. Ashia Salum Seif Mubarak of the Shura Council of the Kingdom of Bahrain will be speaking here and has spoke last night at the St. Louis Community Empowerment Foundation's 10th Annual Salute to Women in Leadership. Dr. Mubarak has held the positions of Director of Planning and Educational Projects, Ministry of Education, Head of Information Section, His Majesty's E-Learning Project, Director of Woman and Child Information Center, a teacher in Ministry of Education, a member of the Shura Council for Second Legislative Session, Deputy Head of the Service Committee, Shura Council for the First and Second Legislative Sessions, and member of the Financial and Economic Affairs Committee. Now please understand, you know how we get elected, it's kind of interesting, but you must be so special that you are appointed by the King. Whereas she has earned a PhD in Information System Management, a Master of Information Management, and a Mass Media Degree from Manchester University, a BS in Science and Education, a Diploma in Education in Business and Projects Management. Whereas today, we would like to honor her and all her previously received recognition and honors in Bahrain. She has seen so many already at such a young age, the British Foundation Award, Chevenning Scholarship, British Council, a member selected for the Eisenhower International University Award, and Louis Boral Achievement Certificate. So therefore today, we would like to honor you, Dr. Bahrain. Please come in. We would like to honor you in this chambers with what we have to give, which is the recognition of you today for being here and for all that you have done and we wish you well in your endeavors because I know there will be many more. So here, in honor of the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis, we recognize you today.
Ladies and gentlemen, your honorable, well, I am very overjoyed by this resolution today and I am really over excited to receive such a prestigious resolution from a well-respected organization or for the Legislative Chamber. I came from Bahrain. Bahrain is on a small island in the Arabian Gulf. It consists of 33 islands, it's an archipelago. This small island is a melting pot where you can find different races, different religions. We have Jewish community, we have Christian community as well as Muslims community and also we have a lot, lot of other religions in the, you name it. Why I told you about Bahrain? I told you about Bahrain because I noticed from last night that a lot of the guests, they don't know about this such small country. This small country has achieved a lot, especially for women. You can find women in very high positions. For instance, you can find them in Shura Council, which is the Senate, and you can find them in the Parliament. By the way, we have a bicameral system. We have the Senate and we have the Representative House. We are 11 women in the Senate, which is appointed by His Majesty the King, whereas in the Representative House, we have four women elected. So this is out of 40, 40 in the Shura Council and 40 in the Representative House. And among these women, as I mentioned earlier, women's come from different sectors, from different, from all walks of life. We have from Jewish community, we have from representative, from the Christian community, and we have a woman representing the disabled, you know, community of people. Women in Bahrain have achieved a lot. They managed to break the ceiling, the glass ceiling, and they managed to reach very high positions like ministers, judge, ambassadors. By the way, our ambassador here is a Jewish Bahraini and so when I, last night when I sit with, near my, one of the guests, she's a Jewish, she was surprised that Muslim, Muslim countries, there is a Jewish community. Yes, we have Jewish community and we have Christian community and we live in harmony and everybody, you know, is treated equally. And I want to tell you another thing. Bahrain now is also focusing and one of its main targets is to build an awareness, not only in Bahrain, but in the Gulf region, about human rights. I chaired the Committee of Human Rights in the Shura Council. We have also a sister committee in the Representative House and we work together to ensure that we amend legislations and, you know, to build also legislative awareness about human rights in Bahrain and in the region. Anyway, I don't want to take you from your business. I know you are busy, you have a schedule and you have to meet all these schedules and just, I would like to say thank you for allowing me this opportunity to be here today with you. I think me being here today, I think we are building a bridge of relation, bridge of love, and bridge of peace, hopefully.
Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion? I don't know if any of the other guests are going to say anything or?
Yeah, I was going to ask.
Okay. All right, you want to do that first?
As I introduced earlier in our annasmas for guests, Gabriel Holder is here, Sherri Hadley, most of you all know her from TV and of course as an actress in films, Richard Gant, you also know him from many roles, most especially I think Deadwood is a biggie with a lot of guys. I don't get it, but. And then Curtis Benjamin is here also and he works with an organization called Saving Our Daughters, but I wanted to recognize them again and I wanted to ask if any of them had any words, very briefly, that they'd like to share with the chambers this morning.
Hi, my name is Richard Gant. I am in show business. My very special passion of course is cultural connectivity and the opportunity to be here last night for the wonderful award ceremony where not only Her Excellency was feted and to recognize, but also Ms. Hadley, it was a special honor. And then to be here today, to be in this chamber, this august chamber is simply fabulous to me and the notion that there can be hands across the sea, that cultural connectivity is alive and well is especially fabulous for me and mine. Thank you so much.
Good day, everyone. I'm Sherri Hadley. I'm an actress, many of you remember me from Coming to America. I am honored to be here in your great city of St. Louis. I would like to thank Michael McMillan for having me here. We had a wonderful award ceremony last evening and again I was honored to receive an award for television and film and again, congratulations to Her Excellency. I also am here to represent Saving Our Daughters, which is an organization that Curtis Benjamin founded. It's a wonderful organization for women and we discuss bullying and, and also domestic abuse and we are empowering women and, and giving them strength to carry on after abuse and such things. I'd also like to thank Gabriel Holder, who is not only my friend, but my business partner, also, oh my goodness, it's overwhelming to be here, I'm just so excited. Marlene, thank you so much. Richard Gant, oh, I think I've got everybody. Sorry, thank you so much and have a wonderful day. Thank you for having us here in St. Louis.
Well, first of all, I want to thank Michael McMillan for last night and it's a very special time for me at this time and Gabriel, I want to thank you and Sherri Hadley. I recently lost my daughter of 11 years old to cancer. And it's, I feel now is my mission to continue what she would want her father to do, to inspire and empower young girls and young women. So I just want to thank Excellency, thank you so much. And I would thank Michael again for yesterday, it was very empowering and I just want to continue her legacy and her name and to empower young girls across the country. Thank you again.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Well, Dr. Mubarak, this resolution is the highest honor this Board has to give and what it does is that it cements in time some of your current contributions up until the day. So 100 or 200 years from now, when you come back and research the records of the City of St. Louis, they'll find Dr. Mubarak's name within, contained within those records and they know that you've achieved so much and given so much that we paused in our deliberations on this day to recognize you for some of those many contributions. So again, this Board in this city thanks you for everything that you've done and everything you continue to do and also to each and every one of you for coming to the City of St. Louis and taking part in such a very special recognition of women and achievement of women all across the United States. Mike, thanks for everything that you've done to put that together. Let's stand and give them all a round of applause and let them know how much we appreciate them here in the We move and second it that we adopt our Courtesy Resolution Calendar, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. That will return to our regular order of business. Approval of the minutes. Alderman from the 13th. Alderman from the 17th. Approval of the minutes from?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we approve the minutes from our meeting in April 26th and May 3rd.
The move by Alderman from the 17th, second by Alderman from 10th, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Aldermen's
We'll dispense with line items 7 through 10, first reading of Board Bill.
Board Bill 67, sponsored by Alderman Bosley and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel on a portion of Malankradd Street in City Block 1743 and 1748. Board Bill 68, sponsored by Alderman Wessels and ordinance pertaining to the allocation, approval of public funds for the annual allocation of $1 million for crime prevention programs and requiring affirmative vote of a majority of all the members of the Board of Aldermen containing a severability clause. Board Bill 69, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy and Alderman Cohen and ordinance pertaining to campaign contribution limits containing findings, containing definitions, campaign contribution limitation amounts, amendments to limitation amounts, determination of maximum contributions following campaign financed disclosure reports, the duties of the Municipal Officials, Ethics Commission, violations, a penalty clause and a severability clause. Board Bill 70, sponsored by Alderman Flowers and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute upon receipt of and in consideration the sum of $1 and other good and valuable consideration, permanent easement, which shall give, grant, extend, and confer on Procter &amp; Gamble Manufacturing Company the right to build and maintain pipelines containing an emergency clause, that's the extent of our first reading.
Reference to the committee.
To the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 68 and 70, to the Streets Committee, Board Bill 67, and to the Legislation Committee, Board Bill 69, that's the extent of reference to committees.
Second reading.
The following board bill was reported out of Housing Committee, Board Bill 34, sponsored by Alderman Wessels and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute and deliver intergovernmental cooperation agreement by and among the City, County, Missouri, and Economic Council of the City of St. Louis County and St. Louis Development Corporation concerning the combination of existing SLCEC and SLDC Development, Business Development, Business Finance, and Entrepreneurial Support Services containing a severability clause, that's the extent of our second reading.
Perfection consent.
Board Bill Number 4, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy and President Reed and ordinance to provide for the borrowing of funds in anticipation of the collection of tax payments levied by the city for deposit in its general revenue fund for calendar year ending December 31st, 2013 and remaining uncollected and other revenues remaining to be collected and deposited in the general revenue fund for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2014 containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number 11, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordinance recommended by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, and the Board of Investment and Apportement authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute an agreement and a contract of sale for the exchange of property between St. Louis and North Park Partners containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill Number 12, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Investment and Apportement authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute the Lambert Airport Local Concept Food Beverage Concession Agreement between the City and OHM Concession Group containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 37, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Investment and Apportement authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute a restated and amended lease agreement between the City and Signature Flight Support Corporation containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill Number 38, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Investment and Apportement authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute a lease agreement between the City and MHS Travel and Charter Incorporated containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill Number 6, sponsored by Alderman Young and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel on Stadium Plaza between Clark and Walnut, a two-foot strip along north side of Clark between Stadium Plaza and Broadway. Board Bill Number 7- Board Bill Number Seven, sponsored by Alderman Young and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel on a 20-foot wide north-south alley in City Block 22 bounded by First Car, Second, and Viddle. Board Bill Number Nine, sponsored by Alderman Boyd and ordinance pertaining to parking within the 1600 block of Belt Avenue Residential Parking District, authorizing the Pack Traffic Administrator to designate the location and restriction for curb parking of residential parking zones within the 1600 block of Belt Residential Parking District containing definitions, a penalty clause, and an emergency clause. Board Bill Number Fifty Eight, sponsored by Alderman Davis and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel in Pappen from Grand adjacent to City Blocks 2212 and 2213. Board Bill Number Fifty Nine, sponsored by Alderman Davis and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel in the east-west alley in City Block 2158 bounded by Rutgers, Compton, Caroline, and Virginia. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the 13th, you recognize on motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for perfection of the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from 13th, second by Alderman from 11th, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Dispense with line items 16 through 19 and 21 and 22. Missed lines, unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Immediately following full board meeting, Todd Fagan from LaCleed Gas will show a presentation titled LaCleed Gas Cast Iron Main Replacement Program. Lunches will be provided for the aldermen. Monday, no meetings. Tuesday, Ways and Means Committee meeting in the Kennedy Room, not the leisure room, the Kennedy Room. See the attached sheet for the schedule. Wednesday, Aflac and Conseco Insurance Companies will be here in the chambers from 10 o'clock until 11 o'clock Wednesday. Also Ways and Means Committee meeting, 9:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Housing Committee meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Public Safety Committee meeting, 11:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Thursday, full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. That's Thursday, full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. Also on Thursday, Neighborhood Development meeting, 2:00 p.m. in the Kennedy Room. Friday, no board meetings. Friday, no meetings. That's the extent of my announcements.
Alderman from the eighth.
Mr. President, members of the board, the Transportation Committee, we've made arrangements to take all of the committee members Friday, May 31st, to the airport. We will take a shuttle bus from here right after the board meeting. We'll go to the Joanne Wayne Conference Room, have lunch or one of the conference rooms there. We'll have a tour of the off-premises sites, a tour of the inside perimeter of all of the buildings at the airport. But I'll give you a full schedule, but a couple of things. We have room for about 15 people. You know, I'm gonna have your secretary sweat you a little bit, make sure you're committed. Number two, if there's any other aldermen that want to go and see what's going on at the airport and all of the premises and most of the legislation we address, we would be more than happy to have you and in that case let Tina, my secretary, know. But I'll keep harping on it until we get this locked down. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman from third.
Thursday, 9 o'clock, we'll do Streets. Anybody that has a bill in the Streets Committee, please notify the clerk so that it can be advertised, 9:30.
All right. Alderman from 24.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to wish all the college graduates in the region today a congratulations. There's a lot of ceremonies going on today and tomorrow and I want to wish special congratulations to my sister, Callie, who graduates from the University of Minnesota tomorrow. And a close reading of the record will show that I believe she's the only family member to graduate in a mere eight semesters. So congratulations to my sister.
All right, thank you. Alderman from 10th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. This Sunday, the 19th of May, will be the annual Spring BBQ at American Legion Post 15 at the corner of Bischof and Edwards on the Hill from 11 till 6. Please stop by, this benefits their Child Welfare Unit. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Thursday, the 23rd, at 2 o'clock, we'll have a Neighborhood Development meeting with many bills.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the first.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just wanted to, I told Ms. Hadley I was gonna do this after she left. She talked about being in Coming to America, but a guilty pleasure of mine is I've watched All My Children since the beginning and they just started coming, they took them off, but they're just back on the internet now. And Ms. Hadley played many, many years. People know her as a police person on All My Children. She was very famous for that show and some of us know that show.
Yeah, all right. If we're gonna invite the, our Community Education Council, if you guys can come up, invite the kids up as we wind up our meeting. They wanted just to have a, say a special note to the board on our way out today, so. And they've been patient throughout this whole meeting, so. And I know that's hard to do. You want to do other things than sit in this hot chambers today, don't you? Let's give our kids a round of applause as they come up to that stage. These are the leaders in most of the schools that they're in, so I'm gonna let one of the administrators take over. You want to talk?
Well, I want to give appreciation to God first and foremost for creating this day and I want to thank you, Louis, for creating this opportunity. I want to thank you, the members of the Board of Aldermen, for allowing this. We know it's a small exception here at the end of the proceedings. But these students, these young people that you see gathered up here at the podium are some of our finest students out of St. Louis Public Schools Division of Community Education. Community Education is a division within the public schools that seeks to link the circles of involvement between city government, the school district itself, parents, the school administration, local churches and other civic organizations. To empower these, our young people, to make sure that one day they too may be able to sit in the various seats that you're sitting in. I know there are several of you who have served in the same position I do. I'm the citywide chairperson for Community Education right now, but I know that that's a seat that the Honorable Marlene Davis has held, that the Honorable Craig Schmidt has held, and we see so much support coming from those of you who even took time this morning to come in extra early. But it really is about setting example for these young people. Community Education has been a division in St. Louis Public Schools for the last 45 years and we've been celebrating young people like this for the last six years, I believe. And I don't want to keep this long because it really is about the young people. I mean, we always hear, you know, the children are our future. Well, this is it. And the one thing that I have to say, as a product of St. Louis Public Schools, my children all graduated from St. Louis Public Schools and I have a son who is now, because of the work that we do through Community Education, is a teacher in South Carolina. I have a daughter who decided to enter the military and she's serving our country in Seattle, Washington, through the Army. And I have another son who has a son now and he's bringing his son up in the same way I brought him up through Community Education. So this is why we do the work that we do. It's about undergirding our children so that they have the services and the support that they need so that when they sit in a desk early in the morning until sometime in the afternoon, they know that after they finish that, they've got some extra fun things to do in regards to the before and after-school opportunities that we extend to them, one of which is the St. Louis Major Taylor Bicycle Club, which we've had a lot of support from our president and Board of Aldermen. So again, thank you and I too want to ask, I want to beg that you please stand and give these young people a round of applause for coming out and volunteering in the way that they do. I need one volunteer to step up real quick. Who wants to say something? There you are. I knew you would. I knew you wanted to say something. You're looking like it. Just say thank you. Who wants to say? Go ahead.
Thank you for letting me be the student ambassador at Seagull Elementary. Just thank you for letting me have this opportunity.
Hello, my name is Lily Collins and I am from Shaw Elementary School. I just wanted to say it is a great honor to be here. Thank you.
Cameron? Who's Cameron? Who's Cameron?
Who's Cameron? Come on, quick.
Well, somebody's calling you. Ask Cameron quickly.
Somebody calling them out? Oh, that's Cameron. Cameron tried to holler. See, Cameron said, I don't know any Cameron.
My name is Cameron Parlow from Lefy School. I just want to say thank you to my family for giving me this opportunity because if it wasn't for them, I wouldn't even be here standing.
You guys good? Well, again, thank you so much for coming out today. Thank you for sitting through our meetings and if you notice, we do not have air conditioning in this chambers. And when any of you run for Alderman or president of Board of Aldermen and you're sitting in these chambers, I guarantee you probably won't have air conditioning in either. But, but thank you so much for everything that you continue to do and our office is open to you. I would love to have an opportunity to talk to you about our rules and what we do here at the Board of Aldermen sometime. Let's give them one more round of applause. Alderman, Alderman from the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just want to say thank you to the students. I congratulate you and commend you of sticking with it and hopefully that you'll be the role models for the younger kids as you grow older. Thank you.
Alderman from first.
Mr. President, thank you, members of the board. I also would like to add my congratulations to the students and I also want to thank Mr. Royson, who I've known for a long time, newest mother. And to say that I'm really proud of the bicycle club. The first lady talked about getting up and moving and this is a thing that will keep them. I see all these people are young, fit, and trim. And if you continue to ride that bicycle and do that, it'll be all right. That's part of getting up and moving. And to the people that had to speak, who were volunteered, just keep doing that. You need to be able to do public speaking and you all did great and we're very proud of you. Thank you.
I know when I was that age, you couldn't have get me to a mic. There's no way I would have. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? No discussion from our ex-principal from 14th? You're good. You have to hear from ex-principal.
As you mentioned, there is no air conditioning. But I wish them all well in their future endeavors as they proceed on to high school. I wish them to continue their involvement in the community and to come back and serve your community or the community you choose to live in. And best wishes and also on that note, I'd like to wish all those students graduating from high school the best and have a fruitful life. Thank you.
Alderman from the 13th? Alderman from 13th disappearing. Alderman from the 17th? Alderman from the, hold on a second. Alderman from the 10th? Yeah, for motion to excuse? Yes. Alderman from the 11th, I made the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that the aldermen from the 4th, 22nd, and 28th wards be excused because they are necessarily absent.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 11th, second by Alderman from 12th, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Alderman, Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we adjourn till our next meeting on May 20, Thursday, May 23rd.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 17th, I entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the 12th, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, we stand adjourned.